And you pass the class, I just don't know if it's clear on why they wouldn't.
And that's why I want to, you know, they get a, they get, the seventh graders, they take that algebra, they get a C, and so all of a sudden now they have a, you know, they're pretty high achieving kids, and now they're very worried about that 2.0, it's, you know, on the, on the transcript, and it's only open to a very small number of students.
So once they, according to the policy, as soon as they signed up, and their principal approved them signing up, they would receive, as long as they pass, would receive credit?
They'd receive credit.
I just want, I plan on making this retroactive, if there are students who did take it earlier than I or further along, I would retroactively.
Everybody sat with a first meeting? Okay. I have review on the J S C D, administering medicine to students.
You know, the change in this, if you look in the legal reference, we put it as reviewed, there was a change in statute where now mucocian injections can now be carried, it's just referenced in the legal reference, so it's no change to the policy, it's just additional to the legal reference. That's why it is as reviewed.
Any questions on that? Okay. And we'll move on to the updates.
Update in board participation of board meetings, we updated number one to address what we currently do, which is 15 minutes of practice set at the beginning and the end of the meeting. The local retention, we added the third page of that, which is actually the destruction policy, which is how we get rid of our, things that we can keep on file for disclosed time or that's payroll, whoever in India talks about how that process goes into effect. The personnel records, personnel now are, as we did, had to do with student data, that data is to be confidential, and it's not to be put in a place where it could be shared. And our homework policy, we just changed a little bit of language in there to match state statute. Specifically, Paul, do you remember that one?
No.
Paragraph.
What's the line?
There was a third paragraph, what was the learning activity to increase flexibility and maturity, students with increased maturity, I believe it's that paragraph there. Such as minor changes. Promotion of student was reviewed, related to, when you use competencies, listed that as against state statute. And bullying prevention, if you look on page, yeah, number nine, on the third, fourth, fifth?
I think it's fourth one back.
I'm sorry, it's on the, number nine, you know, sorry, on the fourth one back, number nine. Consistency with the law, the district will not require or request a student to disclose or provide the district with student username or password, authenticate information on social media accounts. However, the district may request a student for a student parent guardian, student voluntarily share printed copies of information of a student's personal social media account. So the new law went to effect that we can no longer, not that we did, but we could not ask for students to show us, give us their passwords or usernames, students are still allowed to put that material off and to give that to us for cases of investigation or whatever. Paul, if you want to add anything else.
Hearing none, I guess, everybody's all set on those? Hearing none, we'll move on to action items, number nine. Uporder recording, school board meeting, minutes to the website.
So, again, I think we've had this conversation, we have a recording, we've recorded, again, that recording is used to help the reporter, our secretary take the minutes. We've had, as you heard, a couple of write to note requests over the last couple of months, that process disinvolved us making copies and getting those up and mailing those out. My comment, I guess, if I've been here, is well, if we do take it, we have it, why don't we put it up on the web? And so I guess I pose that question to you as a board, it wouldn't go up as our official minutes, it would go up as a source, as a resource, as some information. If somebody happened to miss the meeting, they could now go to the website, I think we're going to try to put it on our YouTube channel, and they could go and watch it. It's good if you can't fall asleep, it might be.
So it's, I talked to John earlier, because we were trying to get it set up so that we can actually take this one and put it on, but apparently there's no technical difficulties other than the fact of the way it's presented, so if the board accepts the fact that they want to do this, then he has a better suggestion on how to make it work, and it'll go, like Russ said, it'll be a YouTube, which is going to be a lot easier and a lot, a lot less painless on the, everybody in here to get it, and so that it's accurate.
Can I make a motion to, to record the uploading of school board meeting recordings to the district website? But in the discussion phase, we need to talk about the timing of it, and how long it will take to get it up, or whether it's immediately after, so motions on the floor.
So motions made by Paul, seconded by Brian, and then again, discussions are in the set stuff.
I was gonna throw in, this year for graduation, we had a request for somebody who was serving in military, and we helped them watch a graduation via Google Hangout, pretty easy way to do it. We could do that, and there basically a YouTube channel, so we have a YouTube channel, and that via Google School, we use Google, there's certain things you get with YouTube channel, the length of the video, the quality, the format, et cetera, so we've gone through that, we never publicize we have a YouTube channel, because we really don't even there. So to have a sports awards video from two years ago, we set it up, is pretty stale. So we could put this to our YouTube channel, and have a link on our website to that, and who knows, once a month, at least there'll be new content going on there, maybe quarterly, put our sports awards videos up there too, and have something on there. And that wouldn't be too hard to do, as long as somebody doesn't. So generally, I come here as a dad of three kids in the school district, a community member, but I'm not always here. Ray makes a recording of them, but there's four more steps involved, taking the recordings that Ray has, and doing the same thing with those. So at the Paul's point about what would be done, well, if we were just running a Google Hangout as recording right away, it's kind of done then, if someone's not here to do that, and we're using the tape, and you'd need a couple of hours for it to be converted to process and uploaded, well, the cup's full, and that might not happen right, it may not be a priority, so you would need to dictate how soon that would need to happen.
Would the clarity be as good as that?
What you see on the TV?
Or would the, I mean, would it project, I mean, that's making, you know, putting it naturally, it's burning on a disc, I would imagine. Would it, would it, when you're viewing it on screen, would it be, would it look that good, or you would?
How good do you want to look, Sean?
I want to look real good.
Because now we're getting the politics videos, that's a full-time job.
Yeah. Got a little thin hair, so I don't want, you know.
Yeah, you know, we can do, like, we can dirty our tapes.
I guess as long as the quality, as long as the quality's good, and people can actually see what it actually is.
Absolutely, absolutely, you can see it, you can hear it, I was not talking about having a feed from the microphones into this, I'm just saying we're putting something out here that's capturing the noise in the room, not as an official record.
Well, again, I, I don't want to duplicate, so if it's better, or as good as what Ray's doing, then we can, minus one step, in other words, that's what I'm looking for, if it isn't, then we should look at something different, I guess.
So the benefit of that is quality, right? And for Kate to hear what's going on, she's getting much better quality with the microphones there, she can turn that off. For this, for doing, using a Google Hangout, straight to a YouTube channel, it's ease, it's, it's streaming it right to the YouTube channel, so as it's going on, it's recording right there, but you're sacrificing quality on that. So, maybe for one, we try both.
Okay.
Okay, and maybe we see what's acceptable. So maybe for the January meeting, January, we could do both, and we could look at it.
Okay, because if Kate doesn't have a problem, that's one issue.
Blair and Abby here, can we do this, buddy?
I can continue to do this.
Okay. You can get me that, and then, and then what I'll do is I'll put, I'll put the two of them up, and then.
You guys can make a decision of that.
And what I'll do is I'll also give you feedback, what it takes for each one.
All right.
So what's the command power, and what are we doing?
Jan.
A question I would have is, would there be any panning, or would there be, for example, if there was a presentation, would it actually show the presentation so that it would be a good replication of the meeting? And if it wasn't, I'd say just go with the audio, because I don't think just the still of us sitting up here is that stimulating.
No. Heard our feelings, actually, it's universal. So I, so what I was saying, just like planting an, planting an iPad right here, looking at you guys, it's not panning, it's not.
I mean, what's, what would be, I think, of interest is if there was a presentation, and I'd like to encourage more of the PowerPoint or whatever, other presentations, so that the audience can see what, what we have, then I think that would add value. But I think if it isn't, I would just assume just do the audio, that's my input.
Anybody else have any?
Kind of feedback on Jan's, if there were, I mean, if you were just getting this, I will agree that most people are here to hear what's going on, not to look at us, but the, any presentations that would be made, if you could link that at once, you know what I mean, so you have the, the audio, and then link any kind of presentation that's done at the, I don't know, we could play with it, it could be a trial on our basis for the first six months or so, I guess, but.
Great.
I mean, we don't, we don't, I mean, we don't, we don't have a ton of PowerPoint, if we agree with Jan, it would be great, but we do have presentations like this to, to have them made in that format, so that everyone's looking at it.
And for something like that, it really would take a lot to.
Point is.
There you go, something, no, that's good, so I guess we'll, do you want to just move forward with trial, and a couple of trials, just to see, is everybody happy with that, to see if we can make it work?
Good.
Give it a, put it through a pilot program? John's pilot. Perfect. John, read.
Do we need to?
I think we do need to vote, so I guess all in favor of who wins this poll, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Tensions, motions varies. Okay, next is B action, which is the.
Proof, flash, and recording presentation.
Yes.
Presented tonight during the public hearing.
So would someone like to make that motion? It's on the hearing that we had before the meeting, for the taking of that stuff.
I make a motion that we approve the practice of recording for the purpose of RSA 189, colon 68, dash, four, that we approve the recording for purposes of educational.
Okay, motion made by Brian, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Urgent Paul. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Tensions, motion varies. Okay, thank you. Okay, now informational, additional.
This is with additional.
Second agreement.
Yep.
You need a contraction. Okay, write your motion for that.
Don't even.
Oh, don't even, oh, that's right. Sorry about that. Okay, moving on to manifest.
I'll make a motion that we approve AP manifest 2016-10, we will adjust 2016-B, 2018. Eight, eight, and 2016-9, 2019.
Gotcha. Okay, motion made by Paul, do I have a second? Second by Jan, and discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Tensions? Motion varies. Thank you. Okay, back to public forum.
So, Pam Colomero, Lower Main Street, so I wanted to talk a little bit about, it's also related to what Mr. Holden was saying, it's nice that maybe you're bringing some students back, because it's pretty well documented that a lot of students have left, in some classes, 25 percent, in some classes, 38 percent of, of classes gone. So, but then when you said you brought them back, you said something about self-contained programs, and I am, I'm actually a certified special ed teacher, but I teach second grade currently, I know that students don't want to be segregated, or self-contained, nor is that best practice, so if we're working to improve, and it sounds like you're open to that, and you have, you stated that you have teachers with several certifications, well, those teachers should be able to modify the curriculum to meet the needs of different students, so I would like for you to consider not having self-contained classrooms, and, you know, serving students in a way that they're not segregated, or kept out of the sports programs.
Sure, I'm going to, I'll make this correct for a second, we have brought some students back, and some of those students have come back, need to be in self-contained classrooms, so not all our students who have come back have gone into self-contained classrooms, so provided the least restrictive environment?
Yes.
Right, and so that's their least restrictive environment, but I wouldn't say that every student that has been coming, that has came back, has been put into a self-contained classroom, just giving you an example.
Right, and I'm just saying that to provide at least a serving environment, as, you know, and also, I do want to address the sports issue, and the policy, and as far as students not being allowed to be part of sports, you know, especially special needs students, if their grades aren't high enough, so, I don't know, I just think that's another way that the school segregates students, so, I mean, we're talking about improving the school, and I just think that's another place you could look at to improve.
Thank you. Yes?
I just asked a question about self-contained classrooms as well, I worked at the elementary school when I worked in self-contained classrooms, and when parents came and they saw some things going on back then, that you're well aware of, some of the rooms that I had at lunch were torn down the next day, that students were quickly pushed out of district, which saddened me, because I worked with many of them, and I knew their potential, and I knew that in some way, some of those kids could have been included in the regular classrooms, share this with you. But to hear that they're coming back concerns me, because what, what kind of self-contained classroom would we put these in here? I feel that if they need to be in a self-contained classroom, they need to be at another facility where they're a little more equipped, and they can accommodate these kids, and provide the services they need, but I don't understand why we have self-contained classrooms.
Again, I was using that, that some of the kids who've brought back have been put into self-contained classrooms, or very small programs, right? You're using that as a very general term right now, that's not really appropriate to do, nor would it be something that has gone on here, or whatever was in the past was in the past, and I can't necessarily speak to that, I was not under my tenure. We provide every student a life to their life goal with an appropriate education, we give them their, their least restrictive environment, that's our, that's our job, that's the law, and we continue to do that. We program for students, we program well for students, we program real well for students, to make sure that they have the things that they need to be successful within our schools. And I know, you may not agree with that, but I think there are lots of people who are in.
From my personal experience, my professional experience, there are definitely some disagree with that, but, okay, I think I understand.
Anybody else have anything?
April Lawrence for Corin Road, I just have two quick questions, John, on this, you heard the talk about Google Hangout, would that be something that's available live as well, or would it be later?
Yeah, Google Hangout could be live.
Okay, so, and that's just something.
If we chose.
Streams, streaming might be a little tough sometimes.
It could be.
So just to that point, when we're determining, you know, how good of quality we want compared to that availability, I think especially when the meetings get a little heated, having it live, where people can watch it at the same time, or immediately after, would certainly help, as opposed to carrying it through the rumor mill, and how it escalates from there, so, just a plug, you know, simpler, less technology, or less quality technology, but having the benefit from there. And the second thing, Sean, I just wondered, who could tell me, when the kids take the seventh grade algebra, what, you know, you said, you know, top 5 percent, how many kids, and what do we have at the advanced level program, you know, if they're starting at seventh grade, you know, how do we get, what are they taking as a senior, and do you have a lot of high school students now that are doubling up on math anyway, so, you know, what kind of benefit does that offer?
It's a great question. First part again, though, I'm sorry.
So, you just said, do you have five or six hundred kids?
So, typically, what it probably should be is one or two. This year, we ended up at six or seven, you know, so it was just a, you know, statistically huge number, and what we do is, they take a spring unit test at the end of the year, we'd like them to be in the top 5 percent to do that. We do allow, if they, if they're close to it but haven't reached it, the one thing we always worry about is, you take the 94th percentile, and you take the 93rd, and, you know, and where you go from there. We'll be very strict on the top 5 percent, but if you score high enough, we'll let you take it again, and so, then you have another opportunity to do that 5 percent. We also meet with all the seventh grade parents when they decide to take that, because there are potential scheduling conflicts that do occur, you know, scheduling's a very complicated process anyway, and you're really looking, for instance, you know physical science runs in the ninth grade, so you work the ninth grade schedule around that, you're typically not running a ninth grade schedule around a seventh grader who's in the third grade, near a high school math, so what we do is we meet with all the parents, just to make them aware of that. And our highest math class is calculus, so if you take algebra as a seventh grader, you're going to finish your junior year in high school, so you're not, your math, you'll finish in junior year. So we let all the parents know that there's an expectation that they are going to try to access a higher level math class in some format, it could be virtual learning, it could be connecting with college, taking the college course, but we're letting them know that, that that's not something they really don't want to do, which we can understand, our recommendation would be, take the algebra in the great, great year of the senior year.
Now, if they do that, if they, you know, have that availability, can they do it during school day?
Yes, they would, again, transportation, we, we haven't gotten there yet, and we're interested to see, our first students who did it are now freshmen in high school, so they're in third grade high school, so, so far it's gone pretty well, but we really haven't seen it all the way through.
Sean, sorry.
Yeah.
Of those seven students, have you had many take V-Lax courses coming up out of elementary school to move the math along as they arrive?
Some yes, and some no.
Okay.
You know, I would say we've seen more of them who have done it to supplement, you know, one of the other things that they are missing is there's missing that seventh grade math curriculum, so there's certain things that they're missing in there, and we tell them that, so some kids have, some students have gone back through virtual learning and tried to replicate some of those skills. What we have found, which has been nice, is the students have done very well, you know, and that was one of our, you know, what happens when you put a seventh grader into an algebra class, and then because of the scheduling conflicts, when they're in eighth grade, they're taking Algebra II, honors Algebra II, with students who are often two, three years older than them, and, you know, we'll be curious, how will that go? And, and so far, it's gone pretty well, but it's one of the reasons we've kept that 5 percent, because just human nature sometimes is wanting to push kids to really where it might not be appropriate, and so, we feel that we've, we've been cautious, but because of that, the students have been very successful to this point. Thank you.
Just to vote, do you think a percentage of your eighth graders are taking the algebra?
A very large percentage, I'd say 75 percent. Have you a mind? Depends on the, depends on the.
Amanda Hulaw, 547, North Road, I just wanted to provide some clarification on self-contained
classroom, because I think oftentimes when you hear self-contained, you think of a child by themselves, but a self-contained classroom is actually a group of students that have different needs, and there's usually five to 10 students in a self-contained classroom under the definition of it, that is taught by a special education teacher to help them access the JET curriculum. So I just wanted to, from my experience, bring up self-contained classroom, because I know there has been in the media and public portrayals of self-containing by yourself in a room, but in this day and age, self-contained isn't like that anymore, it's actually a smaller specialized group of instruction-like life skills program.
Thank you.
I just want to also give my perspective, which I asked my son, who graduated in 2009, so I asked him how it felt to be educated here at Sunbeam High School, and he said he felt segregated, he felt like he couldn't be educated with his friends, and it was a horrific experience, and I understand what a self-contained classroom is, and he was with other students, and, you know, just based on the experiences of my two sons, one from 2009 and 2012, I'm just trying to bring to light some of the things that happened, and I do appreciate, Mr. Holden, that you were not superintendent at that time, and it does sound like you're trying to make some positive changes, and again, that's wonderful, but I still think it's valid to bring back some of the very sad experiences that some of the past students have had, and make sure that those mistakes are not replicated in the future.
My son started a self-contained family school.
Did you just actually say?
Laura Ellison.
What's that?
Laura Ellison, he actually started a succession at Sunbeam, he was by himself, with a one on one aid, and many of times, the principal had to physically hold him down and contain him, and have to tell the reason, and, you know, so it, it did ruin his education, being segregated, yeah. He did not very.
Jody Manson, Dunhill, I just wanted you guys to clarify, because I don't know if I completely understood it, since he asked about the destruction of the video, we were in the impression it happened the next day, instead of happening that night, so when did it happen?
It was the next day, I apologize, it was the next day.
Okay, that's why I wanted to clarify, and who destroyed it?
My secretary.
And who directed her to destroy it?
I did.
Okay, that's just, let me clarify.
That's mine.
Thank you. Okay, I'll leave you for, no, I get everyone. This is Laura Ellison, does anybody know if there are video cameras in the parking lot?
There are some that are in the parking lot this year that point in specific directions or rotate through. Yes.
Did you hear me?
Sure, there is one in the front of the school that pans out towards the ball field, there's one on this corner that pans down and back in this parking lot, there's one in the far snack shop, I believe, or the storage shed, that sort of pans against the back.
Sort of missed the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, so if my daughter's car is getting damaged, is it able to?
She should come speak to the principal, and they could look at the tape, and it may not be, it may not have gotten caught, depending on where the camera goes, because it does rotate, it's not a stationary, because it's, because we're trying to catch a lot of places.
It's exciting, huh?
Right.
Right, order, Aaron in the sun this week, I did file a write to note request for tonight's audio video, are you going to preserve it for this?
According to the lottery, as long as that request, if I've received that request, which you're, I don't know if you're.
You should have, it's been sent.
Right, so if you've received that, and I still have that, then yes, you have the right to that.
Yes.
Just a quick information, Paul Manson, again, anybody that's wondering why I'm here, they can Google RSA 193 app, and read down the list, and that's board members, faculty, anybody, you all know how to get hold of it, read through it, have any questions? Everyone happy to talk, they love it? And the issue is the blatant disregard of it.
Is it? Is it?
One ninety-three F.
Do you direct that to the board or?
Everybody in the, anybody that's concerned.
Okay, so anybody else? What I'd like to say is we are making steps, we hear everybody here. I don't want to turn, I don't want to turn our board meetings into something that, I understand the community has problems or the school has certain issues. But we're not going to, I guess, disrupt the board meetings, every meeting.